That's a fun trip, the kids will like that.
I guess we can start, it's 4:30. The Todd County Board of Commissioners acting as a drainage authority for Todd County will call the work session to order, the time is 4:30, date is June 21st, 2021. All commissioners are present along with Chris and Jolene for their audit of treasure. We will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is, we have to acknowledge that this is a work session and that no action of any type will be taken by the board. And with that, Kurt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully not take too much of your time, but I thought it was important that the role of the drainage authorities are consistent in with the statute with what what happens on the, on this particular ditch system. And again, we're talking more in general terms. I'm sure some things will come up about this specific one, but as was stated, nothing tonight is evidenced, nothing tonight is used in making any type of decisions. First thing I want to talk about, which is, and I always tell county boards, when you're acting as a drainage authority, you take off your county commissioner hat and you put on your drainage authority hat. And the reason that's important is when you make decisions as a county board for such things as roads or sheriffs or you can go and, and look at other things and talk to other people. Doesn't mean you can't talk to people. What I'm saying is, you make your decisions because you're somewhat of an ownership position as, as managing or owning, whatever that happens to be. When it comes to being the drainage authority, all your decisions and all your findings have to be based on what's called on the record, which, which again, I don't want to bore people, but just so you know, whatever decision you ultimately get to, it has to be based, whatever findings you tell me to make, has to be based on things that are on the record, meaning at the public hearing. So, and again, maybe I'm preaching to the choir here, but for example, if you said to make a finding based on, Barb and I were talking, some documents you looked at outside of the hearing, certainly life happens. You're going to talk to people, you're going to see things, but that can't be the basis of your decision. Because if this gets appealed by either party, and I'm not saying it will, but if it did, the court looks at it as what are your findings supported by on the record? Is there evidence in the record that supports whatever you decide to do? And so, when we get to the hearing or have the hearings, it's important that whatever you decide, it be based on evidence that you heard at the hearing. And again, it's impossible, you live life, I mean, you're gonna, it's not like you're living in a bubble, but whatever you decide has to be based on that so that, and, and it makes sense because you're basically asked, acting as a judge, a five-person judicial panel, to determine whether, what evidence, and does that meet the criteria of the statute? And so, again, I'm, I'm just bringing that up because my job is not to tell you what to do, it's to, to defend whatever action you take. And the way I can do that is if there's, and there's a lot of discretion given to a drainage authority. So if there's evidence that supports what you're doing, whether somebody else might decide differently, that's not the issue. The issue is, is there evidence to support it? Because if you made findings based and there's no evidence to support it, that's what's called arbitrary and capricious, and the appellate court would decide, well, there was no basis for that finding, and they call it arbitrary and capricious. So with that, I just want, I, I handed out to you a copy of the statute. And again, you've probably been through this 10 times, but I just wanted to go through it to how, how your decision will be analyzed. Under subdivision two there, it says, after a ditch system is, is constructed, a public or private system that drains property, not assessed benefits into the established drainage system must have express authority from the drainage authority that has jurisdiction, which would be you in this particular ditch system. And the section is applicable to the construction of a public or private drainage system that outlets water into the established drainage system regardless of actual physical connection, which happens to be the case here, that, you know, if you were doing a tile line, for example, this section's used a lot where, for whatever reason, 100 years ago, there was a 40-acre piece that clearly drains into the system and, and there's a direct tile into the system, that clearly has a physical connection, but they specifically have this line in here. If there's a, if you're outletting from a particular property, and even though it may go through a private system before it gets to the public system, that still requires the express authority that's required here. And then, the petition, again, we've, we've had the petition filed. And again, this section comes up quite often, so it isn't like this has never been used before. And then subdivision four is the important one. At the hearing, the drainage authority shall consider the capacity of the outlet drainage system. If express authority is given to use the drainage system and outlet, the drainage authority shall state by order the terms and conditions for use of the established system as an outlet, and shall set the amount to be paid as an outlet fee. And so, it, it, and when we get into the options you have, it's not unusual to set terms and conditions. And in this particular case, well, I, I'll be honest, this one has terms and conditions because there's an operation plan, which is not unusual for outlets from, from lakes or that type of thing. So it, Barb?
Does that have to be set the night of the hearing, or can we continue on with the hearing and set it at a different time?
Right, well, exactly, when we get, that's an excellent question. Because those are the options that I wanted the board to be aware of, so that when you get to the hearing. So, the main issue you look at is capacity. Is the system, can the system handle it? Doesn't mean it's the only, it's, it's the key one, but I can't tell you that if you, if you, you know, if you, if the evidence showed that it was bringing in huge invasive species or something, that might be a fact that would, you know, it's, it's not the one they list in the statute. But again, those conditions could be that, whatever you wanted it to be, as long as it was based on the evidence. So, when you, so that'll be the, one of the big issues, all right. When this, when a system is outletted, if you granted the outlet, under what conditions would it, when could it run? What triggers that? All those type of things that would meet the capacity criteria. So then, if you look under number four, what are the possibilities? What are the things you could do? Well, you could just approve the outlet without any conditions. And again, that's more likely where you, or that example I gave you where you had 40 acres right along a ditch, and for some reason, the viewers 100 years ago missed it. You know, and everybody in the, everybody around, all the neighbor, everybody says, yeah, I don't know why that's not in the system. You know, that's a, I've had those cases where it's pretty straightforward. Then number two, you could approve the outlet with conditions. And back to Barb's question, the conditions may come up on the 29th, or you may feel comfortable coming up with the conditions that night. Or, as you look under number four, you can continue the hearing for such things as further review of the operation and maintenance plan. Or, because it is, and the petitioners will agree in this case, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg. They have a draft, and I've been through this before, you, you have a draft operation plan, but the DNR has to approve it. And so, when do you finally get the final one where you have a, let's say you did that, you had a comfort level, well, yes, under that operation plan, when the, when it only is operated, when the water level's at a certain level, and who has the authority to operate it, and what triggers all that? Again, I don't want to tell you, but that's an important question. If you decided, yeah, there's capacity there, but only with, with this type of operation plan, that those things are only operating when the water is at that level. And who has the authority to, to shut it off, and who, all those questions without getting into specifics. So I, in my opinion, that will be a very important question as to, because again, you represent the ditch, the people in the ditch system, so to, to know that they have some protection based on an operation plan. And again, I'm not trying to tell you where you're even going to go, but it's, it's certainly, because I think, I think everyone would agree, and I don't, forgetting this case, if everybody's in flood conditions, you don't start pumping, not, not here, not anywhere. I mean, pick any project anywhere, you don't do that. So anyway, so approve the outlet with conditions if you decided to do that. Deny the outlet, again, you'd have to have specific findings, not just, you don't like something, you know, you have to have specific findings that the capacity isn't there, or because of X, X is, even with an operation plan, the, the capacity isn't there, or whatever else you believe. And then number four, to continue the hearing, if the drainage authority believes additional information is necessary. That could be things like a more fleshed-out operation plan, or a plan approved by the DNR, or a, you may want, you have the authority, and this is true of every ditch, I'm trying to keep this generic, you have the authority, the statute specifically says you can get a second opinion from another engineer. And so, doesn't mean you'd have somebody redesign everything, but if you had specific questions, like we'd like somebody to look at this operation plan, just so we have an independent comfort level that, that the operation plan will, will operate the way they think it'll operate, or will do that. So, and if that happens, if it, for some reason, you decide on the 28th, 29th, you know, we've got good information tonight, but we still have some questions, and we'd, we'd like some things done. You have the absolute right to continue it. We will continue it. If you do that, if possible, we'll continue it to a specific time and date. That way, we don't have to send out all new notices. So, it's like anything else, you continue on your other ditch hearings. So, and if you let, just, if you would happen to approve it with conditions, then the next question, then there's a second part of that, what would the outlet fee? And in this one, different than where you bring them into the benefited area, my recommendation's going to be, this is more of a usage fee. It's not, it's not bringing them into the benefited area. It's, it's a fee to outlet that system into, into your system, or that pumping system into your system. So, and the reason for that is, it's not on a regular basis, and we don't want it in the benefited area, because then you'd have to form a joint board, and that raises all kinds of other questions. So, my recommendations, if you do approve this with conditions, that you come up with a outlet fee. Basically, it's a use fee to outlet into the system. Randy, I think you had a question?
Well, that's, I think you covered it a little bit about the joint powers. Because once they tie into our ditch, wouldn't that?
No, not if we do it as a use fee or an outlet fee. If we bring them into the benefited area, then we'd have to find, for future repairs, for example. Because if you, if you did set an outlet fee, that money has to go into the, this ditch system. It doesn't go into general fund, and it can be used for repairs or whatever on this ditch system. So it.
Is an outlet fee a one-time payment thing?
Yes.
And it's based on amount of flow? Is that correct, kind of, or not, or?
Well, the statute, all it says is outlet fee. It doesn't, I'll be on it.
There's not a formula?
No, I've done these all over the state, and just to, everyone is different, and, I mean, you could do a one-time, I suppose theoretically, I haven't thought this through, you could, so much when it's turned, well, I'd rather do a one-time, but I mean.
To me, it would be nice if it was yearly. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Because, you know, if you're going to have maintenance in the future years, how can we predict what that maintenance is going to be? So, I mean, if you hit them for a one-time fee, and then all of a sudden, it's creating a lot more destruction than what you thought, it would be nice if there was.
And you could set an outlet, more I think of it, you could set an outlet fee to be paid so much per year. Or when, like they indicated, in any, I'm not just saying this project, with an operation plan, and I was talking to a guy today, where it happened to be wet conditions for the next 18 months, and they were never able to turn on the system. And that's what this system, the operation plan, is designed. That's what they said at the informational meeting. They happen to hit four years where it never gets low enough to trigger the operation, they run the risk of four years of not being able to, to run their systems, so.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
First of all, the night of the meeting or of the hearing, does the, whatever one we choose, one through four, does it have to be made in a motion, or can one person table it? Now, as a board, if one person tables thing, we go, it needs to be tabled. Does this have to be moved, no matter what we do as a motion?
Right. You can't, one person couldn't.
Okay. And so it has to be moved forward with a motion and a second?
You act as a board, one per, I never thought, you know, as a commissioners, you can, one person, how does that work? If one person moves to table it, that is tabled?
Yes, it is.
Yep. But the other four want to make it?
It's tabled, but you have to state a time and a place where it will be brought back to the next meeting.
We can just move to continue the hearing, right?
Right, right. That's right. But one person, let's say Randy moved to continue the hearing, and the other four of you thought, no, we're set to go tonight, it has, it has to be passed. Randy can't continue it on his, on just his vote or his table.
Okay. My, my next questions are, what materials can we have available? Could we have maps? Can we have the drone, you know, I think the lid head gave us a, a video, thank you, of the drone and so forth. Can that be seen? Because we can't see it as a board.
Ultimately, it can, but you're the, you're like a judge. You don't bring in your own evidence. Now, you could continue the hearing and direct your staff, you can do all of that. So if you want to see a drone, or you want to see the maps, or you want to see whatever, I know it seems backwards, but you're not, you're not, yeah, you're not.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're to sit up here as the decision maker, and when you get to the point in the hearing where you go, that's all good information, but I'd like to see the drone footage if they don't have it. Or I'd like to see, whatever you'd like to see, you have the right, as long as it's in any way relevant. And again, one of the things you may want to see is a more firmed-up operation plan. Because it is kind of a catch-22. And we need to, or you need to ask, or I'll need to ask them that. All right, you say this is a draft, I don't know what that means, is it, give me the process. I know it has to go through DNR, but what's your timeline? Who gets to, who gets to make amendments to that operation plan? Because you have to have a comfort level that, if you would grant it with conditions, that the conditions are solid, that you know, that they aren't going to be changed two months from when you approval with those conditions.
You know, even where that culvert goes under the railroad tracks, they have to have permission from the railroad, correct? I mean, do they have that, or do they not?
I don't think they need permission from the railroad.
They do not? Okay, even the size of that culvert under the railroad track, they still would not need permission?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
No, when you talk about the, the operation plan, the DNR hasn't seen that yet, or what?
Yes, they've, based on what I heard that night, they've seen it, but it's still in some draft form. And, and I'll be honest, after that informational meeting, without your authority, I told them, you better have a pretty firm, that was just knowing this board, I knew you would not say, well, that's a nice draft, but if it all gets changed, I'm not going to feel comfortable seeing a whole different plan later on. So that's why we need to find out from them, all right, is it Mike, the engineer? You've, you've got, you've got this plan, and it's looking pretty decent. Give us the timeline, give us the time when somebody stamps it and says, this is good to go. Because I don't know the answer to that, to be honest.
I have a question, a couple of minutes, Kurt. Well, the decision has to be made at the public hearing by the, by the, by the authority, board authority. How do we prepare for that decision-making in writing beforehand or afterward? I mean, how do we as a unit say, yes, we're going to approve of this when we can't talk outside of?
Yeah, ultimately.
How do we decide?
Yeah, no, ultimately, at some point, we will close the oral input portion, and it comes back to the board, and you'll be able to have a full discussion. And during the hearing, you get to, I don't want to shut you up, you get to ask any, if Mike or whoever presents some information, and you have a question, you're like a judge, you get to ask questions. And ultimately, based on what I hear that night, I'll likely at some point come up with some draft findings based what, kind of what I'm hearing from you, so that ultimately, when you get to that decision point, you have some document to look at to say, no, Kurt, that's not what, I didn't want that in here, I want this, or whatever, so. Because it would be hard at a meeting to make an oral motion and try and cover everything in your head that you might want to do.
Thank you, I'm confused over this, because it's a little outside of the board conduct of how we conduct the county board. So, my question is, if we're having a public hearing, and all of a sudden, they expect a decision from us, and we're all looking at each other like, well, we got about five different opinions here. We can't go into a room and discuss this?
No.
We have to discuss it in front of them?
Right.
And if we, if we all say, well, we can't agree, we can then continue the hearing?
Well, you don't have to all agree, it could be a three to two vote, yeah. But most likely, you'll want some consensus, that's kind of how drainage authorities work, you don't want to. So, it's a good, good question, Dave. What, what likely will happen, whether it's the 29th or after two more, can, whenever this board feels like, hey, we've got the information we need, then we'll close the public hearing, the input portion of it, public input. The board will discuss it, and likely you'll, you'll come up with some, some ideas of what you want to see happen. And then you'll likely direct me to put it into a written form and bring it back to you so that it says what you intended to pass, whatever it is. So, I don't know if that's making sense.
Well, it does. I'm just confused about, you know, then we do most of our discussion, and once we, well, once you close that hearing, can we send, say, okay, we want another hearing? Can we as a board say we want another hearing to hear more?
Yeah, once, for that evening, once we say, all right, we're, we're going to end the public discussion tonight, then it comes back to the board, and Randy says, I'd like to see the drone, or whatever you'd like to see, somebody says that, then we'll just continue it, and we'll, but you always continue it to specific time and date, and you also continue it with specific directions from you. We just don't continue it and show up and say, why are we back here? Your conditions might be, we'd like a second engineer to look at the oper, I'm not suggesting that, but that might be one. We'd like to see, you know, we kind of know the area, some of you probably know it better than others. We'd like to see the drone, if, they'll ask Nancy, do we have a drone flight of this area or something? And if we do, we'd like to bring that to the next hearing. Some, some landowner may say, X culvert, or this or that, and you may continue it to say, we'd like either pictures, or you have the authority to go out and look at it. What you, what you don't want to do is do all kinds of reviewing, all kinds of stuff, and come to the hearing with your mind already made up. That's, that's improper. On the record, you've got to make a decision on the record, but you can form the record. They're going to present what they're going to present, people are going to present what they're going to present, but you may think there needs to be more things on the record, the drone flight, that whatever it is, so that when you finally get to that point, everything's on the record. And it, and it's fair to both sides then, because you shouldn't be looking at something that the people for or against this have never seen, because they have the right to say, you know, let us look at what you're looking at, so we understand what you're basing your decision on, so.
I think, Madam Chair, I think my main, main concern is making sure that they got all their I's dotted and T's crossed, because I have no idea if what the DNR's doing with them, or if MnDOT's going to let them come down along, uh, 10. You know, where's the Army Corps on this? You know, they're discharging into the Long Prairie River, which discharges into Mississippi, which is problems now in the Delta. It's like, you know, this, everything just adds up.
So, you may say, we're going to continue with this, and we want, we'd appreciate if someone from the DNR would come and specific, so we're not getting it second-hand specifically, lay out what the process is. And, yes, absolutely.
If we continue it, how, you know, how much length of time, as far as days, do we have to?
Basically, anything you want. You usually look at whoever's supposed to be bringing back stuff to you and say, how much time do you need to get that information, or whatever it is?
But we do have to set that date that night, if we would continue it?
Otherwise, you don't have to, but then we'd have to send out all new notices, and then people really get confused, why'd they get another notice? Because the people that are interested will be there that night.
Yeah. Kurt, if we deny the outlet, I'm assuming we better have our ducks in a row.
Right, you, yeah, yeah, if you deny it, you got to give me specific things in the record of why you're denying it. Because if, you know.
But even if we continue it, we can always deny it after it continues?
Yeah, you, sure. Ultimately, you're going to make the decision.
Either approve it or deny it, but it's just.
I wouldn't, but you could continue it 15 times, and, but ultimately, it's going to get back, you know.
Yeah.
And, and you've seen it done, and you won't do this in this case, because I'll object to it. You never want to continue because it's a tough decision. Because eventually, you got to, so whenever we get to the point where you think we've got all the information we need, you don't continue it because it's a tough crowd tonight, and I'd like to continue it. You finally got to make the decision.
I can't pee us off, and we can make a decision. Nancy, what do we have as board members? I'm sorry, because have we been provided the full plan? Have I got, I don't know, I can't remember if I ever got it or not.
Yep, you should have. The board, it was the board, the whole plan was the board back.
What did we do with that book today?
Is that this one, Nancy?
No, the day that you guys acknowledged, received the petition, that was the entire petition.
Where is, where is that at?
Should be under your, your name.
If you go back into the, like, it would have, you guys forwarded that to them too, right? I know it was a huge pack.
That's one thing we're going to make very clear, what's in the record?
If I don't have it, I want it, I mean.
Yeah, if, what have they submitted to this board besides the petition? Have they submitted their plan and?
Just what was done on the PowerPoint that night.
Okay.
There's been a handout.
That's, that's my job to make sure that we, that if somebody says, here's, here's a statement by somebody that I say, this is now part of the record. Because ultimately, when you make your decision, you need to say, this is the record.
They got all the letters of support, the 40, 50 pages of stuff that they sent over.
But even that was prior, those people should be, well, we can put it in ourselves, yeah.
But, no, when they acknowledged receipt, that was the entire petition packet. So if you don't have it saved, you can go to the board.
I can pull it out of your commissioner's record, the image of that.
I don't care if it's in my computer, I want it printed, so I can have it in my physical hand, so.
Yeah.
You would like a lot of light, Dave.
Well, when we talk, I want to be able to look at it.
Is it a lot of pages?
Yeah, it is.
The younger attorneys in our office say, why would you print anything?
If there's any, any pictures in there, I want it in color. I don't want it black and black.
Madam Chair, I will make sure that it's printed. Anything that is in color will be in color, and you'll have a full packet.
I think it's, what do you think, 40 pages?
Okay.
Well, there'll be more to come, I'm assuming, and I want everything, so. I would like it in a three-ring binder, please, too.
Yeah, they have an attorney, John Chai, and that'll be his job to make sure, on, on their behalf, he's going to want to make sure what's part of the records, so that, so.
Okay.
And the night of the meeting, they just had that handout, which you guys should have all picked up. They had their stuff that was there.
In fact, that's a good point, because I'm going to ask.
But I don't keep that stuff, so I mean, we just.
When the petitioners start, I'm going to ask Mr. Shaki, what do you, what have you submitted, and what do you want part of the record? So that you all know what you're supposed to look at in making your decision.
What we're supposed to have available.
Yeah, what you, yeah.
And Kurt, you'll be running that meeting again, kind of like we opened it and so forth? And Kurt, you'll be running that meeting again, kind of like we opened it and so forth and then turned it over?
After tonight's meeting, I'm going to put an agenda together tomorrow morning, get it up to Nancy. And if you don't mind, I don't mind moderating those meetings if you don't care. I, I enjoy.
Well, that's fine, you know.
So, does this become a part of the record then?
No, this is a work session.
No, but I mean.
Right. If I made it part of the record.
I would like it to be because it's a, it's a guidance, it's a guidance for me.
That's a good point. I will make that part of the record.
Thank you. I mean, I want things to be in there so I can refer to them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I have a question, Kurt. So when do the viewers come in to move an outlet petition?
If the board, let's say you granted it with conditions and the board thought, we don't know what the outlet, the usage fee should be, you could appoint viewers to make a recommendation to you. All it is is a recommendation. You still make the decision that we're going to charge X amount for this outlet. But again, that has to be, that's why I wouldn't mind using a viewer. It has, otherwise you're plucking numbers out of the air. You know, you, if we're, if I'm saying it's on the record and you picked a number and it was based on a recommendation from a viewer, that's, that's plenty of evidence to justify.
And that's on their dime.
I was going to say the same thing. We've got to make sure that that's on the record.
Everything's on their dime.
Yeah.
Everything, that's okay.
So, can we tonight talk about this money that Morrison County has?
No. I mean, I mean, we all know it, but no, we can't. That's the elephant in the room, because we know that number, what it is, and that would go into, could go into people's thinking, well, that seems like a nice number to make the, but you still got to have a basis of why you picked that, other than it was a nice pot of money that was there.
When can that be discussed?
That night. Yeah, you could, you could, you could ask the petitioners, are their engineer, you know, what do you, do you have any recommendation as to what an outlet? Put the burden back on them to see what they think, so.
Well, I have other thoughts on use of that money, so.
Well, yeah, because whatever money it is, it goes into, and we can use the number. It goes into the 41 bank account and it can be used for what, as long as it's on 41, it can be used.
My question is, is who has authority over that money?
You do, absolutely.
Okay.
Once the money is paid as the outlet fee, you, then forget the petitioners. That's money in the ditch 41 account that you can use however you want. That's, well, you got to watch what is, that's why it's theoretically possible it could be a win-win. I mean. A lot of drainage systems don't have any money. Anyway, I'll stop there. You know, you've thought this, you've thought this through too.
Well, we've had a little.
So Kurt, then when that, so in an outlet petition then, if you decide that you want viewers, is that then done like approved, bought with the conditions or would that be then a continuation, continued?
Right. If you're, at some point, if you approve it with conditions, then the step, second step, unless you have it a number that you wanted to pass, would be to say, we want a recommendation from a viewer as to a, a fee. And it could be, it doesn't have to, you don't have to wait until whatever final decision you made. If after the 29th, you thought, these five things we want to see in a continued hearing and so that we're not unreasonably delaying this thing, we'd like, in case we do approve this, we'd like a viewer to give us a recommendation as an outlet. Cause we don't, we don't want to hurry the decision, but we don't want to just drag it out for the sake of dragging it out.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Kurt, if they, if the board did want to have an independent engineer, I know that other costs are back to the lid. Is that cost the responsibility of the lid as well?
Well, that could be one of the conditions that you put on it that they pay for, you know. Yes, we'd have to specifically say that. We, on that one, we can't assume, you know. We'd have to say that night, we'd like a second opinion and we believe it. Because anything that's not paid for by the lid can't come out of your general front. It has to come out of the ditch system, so. And my argument, not just here, anywhere, is the rest of the people in the ditch system either don't care or don't want to pay anything. It's no advantage to them to pay for anything, so. And this is a substantial enough situation that I think very likely they'd say, as long as we made it very specific. We're not giving a blank check, because I've had that happen, to another engineering firm and they go, oh, this is a golden goose, we'll build this X. We'd be very specific what, you know, and then talk to the engineer, what's it going to cost to get these answers for us? That's fair to you, fair to the lid, fair to everybody, that we're not giving, lawyers and engineers, you never give a blank check to, ever, ever.
So then, where would like technical questions go? Cause I'm not a hydrologist or anything like that that understands water perfectly. But this ditch varies in width a lot throughout the series. And then the fall on the ditch, they calculate by the far end and the one end of the other and they say there's so much drop over that. But is that drop consistent?
Those are the very questions that you might ask a sec, a second, an engineer to answer for you.
And then if it's not consistent, like, so let's say it drops at whatever it's supposed to for a while or a little quicker than it should, and it flattens out again, do we get a lot bigger buildup of water?
Good question.
In height at that point?
I have an opinion, but I'm not sure I know, so.
Well, I would think it would. I mean, that would be my opinion.
But again, there's a lot about hydrology that I've learned over the years that, that isn't the way you think it works.
Right. Well, they, they talked.
Head pressure, size of tile, I've learned, okay, some of you know this, but so. And again, you would not want to make your decision without evidence and that takes expert evidence. Unless one of you is a hydrologist, you shouldn't say, we want to make a finding because in the flat areas, this is going to happen. Rod, as you said, you don't have the expertise to say that.
No. No, but they used specific points that night.
Right.
Or specific locations and said that, you know, with this much added water, it's only going to raise an inch. Well, that's great in that one location.
Those are good.
But what does it do when it's three feet wide?
Those are, so when I tell you you're acting as the judge, I don't want to muzzle you. Those questions, when, when their engineering, engineers is done and said, I'm open for questions and you feel that's a question that you just have to have a comfort level, you need to ask them that.
And, and when was the last time this ditch was maintained or?
Never.
Never has been?
That's a bit of an issue.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And, and, and that, that may be a condition, that the outlet fee is used to repair, to clean out the system so you have more of a comfort level that the system is blowing a little better than it does now. That, it's a possibility, it's up to you, but that's why when I use the word win-win. Be a way that they can get the ditch cleaned up.
Yeah. I think we need to have some criteria in there that if, I mean, we can have all the experts in the world tell us what's going to happen here, but in reality, if it doesn't happen, then I think we need to have the authority to shut it down and say, until this is fixed. And I, I would like to see that as a clause in there, as giving us the.
That's always a. Yes, I understand what you, I totally agree with you. Comes up every time. But you still have to have a triggering device. It can't be Dave looking from the road saying, I don't.
No, I just.
It's, it's got to be based on something to shut it down.
And I think we need to think that through and what we want to base that on.
Kick that in.
Cause if it, cause in the end, Kurt, it was my French, then we're the assholes here. So, I'm sorry, but that's just a.
No.
Cause if we don't make good decision here, we're going to be.
No, I've done this 40 years and people that have farmed the land said, I know what that engineer said, but that's not the way the land works. And that's a hard argument both ways. The engineer said, well, no, the numbers show this and the farmer says.
I've lived here for 50 some years and I know what happens.
Anyway, those are all excellent questions. That's why, I don't want to tell you what to do, but it would be somewhat unusual if you had such a comfort level on the 29th to make a decision. I'm not saying you won't, but it, and that's not just this project. Any large, just improvement projects, we almost always have a continuance, because there's always something that comes up, so.
And if I may, Madam Chair, the other question I have is, because we can't think or talk, well, we can think and talk, but outside of this meeting, can we, as individuals, come up with a list prior to the hearing? Okay.
The concern you, that'd be a, probably a good idea.
Because otherwise, we're delaying all the way down the line here.
When I say you can't think or talk, you can think or talk. You just can't base your decision on things you thought or, or talked about that was never made part of the record. That's all I'm saying. You can, you can talk, you can do whatever you want. But whatever you decide has to, somewhere, when they, when they, we're taping this.
Yes, we are.
Yeah. Somewhere, whatever you decide, somewhere in that tape, it has to justify whatever you decides.
So basically, we're gathering the facts.
That's right. You're like a judge. You're, you're hearing the evidence that night and, and like a judge, you can say, yep, that's all good evidence, but I, I want this fleshed out or I want a second opinion or whatever you want. Oh, I think we, this helped me. I don't know if it helped you, but I, I was, I was getting, I'll be honest. I was getting concerned, since I have to defend you, to make sure we all agreed with what on the record means. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate it, so. No, you, no, I won't say it. No, Dave, you don't go back, just go back into a little room.
Well, Doug on it.
I started 43 years ago, all decisions were made back in a little room.
Well, you said we weren't a county board anymore, so.
Guess we're the judge, not the jury.
Oh, we are the jury, really, judge and jury.
Will we have people on Zoom that night, Chris? It is, it's still in June.
Yes, we will.
Cause July 1st Zoom changes, you know.
Yep. We, we announced that this would be done over Zoom as well as in person. But the, the open meeting law related to Zoom meetings after that date really pertains to how you as a voting member attend. And as I understand it, everybody is attending in person as the, the board.
Yeah, cause boards across this, tomorrow I have in Niklet County, which is St. Peter, a, a reestablishment of record hearing. And their board hasn't, that entire meeting tomorrow is Zoom. So, as I go to 40 or 50 different counties, some are hybrid, some still haven't opened to a board meeting, so it's all over the place, so.
The only thing Chris said that last Zoom meeting or meeting Zoom, I couldn't hear what that guy was saying half the time, so.
Yep. So we're adjusting that and we'll be able to make sure.
And this time being a public hearing, if, if any board member can't hear something, you need to say it, because I'll either repeat what they said or Chris will, because we're, we're going to make sure that.
Cause one guy just kept talking and I couldn't hear half of what he was saying, so.
The other thing is during their informational meeting, and I don't know his name, but from Lake Shamana, kept wanting to stand up and answer all the questions.
Yeah. I'll, I'll.
You know, to me, he didn't have the right to answer.
That won't happen when I'm moderating. That, it will be a much.
He didn't have the right.
Informational meetings are pretty loosey goosey.
Right.
The 29th will not be that way.
Okay.
So if I'm, I'm uncomfortable with their answer from the DNR without hearing it from the DNR or MnDOT or Army Corps, that could be part of continuing on the meeting.
Right.
Okay.
And, and we can't order them to be there, but you could ask petitioners to get in writing, let, let's say, well, I can't, you know, cause like some state agencies, people still aren't going out, so they may have to get your question answered in writing. But that, you know, as long as it comes from the agency that you have concerns of, so.
Because why go through the process if they don't have their ducks in a row ahead of us?
Right.
Because, you know, crap flows down the hill and we're in the bottom.
Because what comes first, your approval or their, you know, that's why we really need to flesh, that's a legitimate. Cause this whole thing is based on the operation plan. That, knowing you and knowing my advice, you're not just going to say, yeah, you got your outlet, turn it on whenever you want. That's not going to, it wouldn't happen here, it wouldn't happen anywhere, so.
Who controls the switch?
All right. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. I have a much, I feel better just that.
Giving you some direction.
I don't know what we do, but we feel.
No, I know. But, but I didn't want you to make one of the findings at the hearing we're going to approve or deny, and it's based on a drone thing that I looked at on my kitchen table. That's what I didn't want to happen.
No, we're going to listen.
All right. Thanks. I appreciate it. Yep.
I'll get an agenda up to you.
Did you watch the drone?
I did not.
Oh, you should watch it. It's kind of cool.
Yeah, I bet.
You know, it's like. You trying to guess where, where they're at?